Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, November 21st, 2022, 7:00 PM at City Hall and City Council chambers for the regular meeting of the City Council. Officially called the meeting to order and entertain a roll call.
Belfour?
Here.
Bergen?
Here I am.
Dranko?
Here.
Kengis?
Present.
Rothie?
Present.
Schneider?
Here.
Myers is absent.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, and welcome back, Mr. Panikos, our guest councilman, for the month of November. Moves to item C, Pledgeable Agent, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Brings us to section D, Approval of the Agenda.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Dranko. Any council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Section E is the Approval of the Minutes. Entertain a motion to do so.
I will move approval of the November 7th, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Rothie. Council discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Section F is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Reads as follows. "November 26th, 2022, whereas according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, America's 30.7 million small businesses represent 99.7 percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States, and whereas these small businesses were responsible for 65 percent of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018, and whereas small businesses employ 47.3 percent of America's private sector employees, and whereas surveys show that three-quarters of U.S. consumers are seeking ways to shop small and support their local communities and neighborhoods, and whereas 96 percent of consumers who shop local on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping in small, independently-owned businesses support their commitment to making purchases that have a positive economic, social, and environmental impact, and whereas, across the country over the past few years, small businesses have faced severe hardship due to the global pandemic and its after-effects, including forced business shutdowns, workforce shortages, supply chain issues, and now more than ever need the encouragement and support of our local customer base, and whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the city of Waverly to support local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. Now therefore, I, Adam Hoffman, Mayor of the City of Waverly, Iowa, City Council, do hereby proclaim November 26th, 2022, a Small Business Saturday in Waverly and encourage all citizens to patronize our city's many small businesses for a direct positive impact on our local economy and our many neighbors who own and operate them. Approved and adopted this 21st day of November 2022, pending your approval."
I heartily move approval of the mayor's proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Kengis, second by Rothie. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same. Motion carries. Section G is Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening? See, nobody rise. We'll move forward to section H, The Consent Calendar. The following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requested a specific item be considered separately. Item 1 is a pay request from WHKS for Waverly State Revolving Fund, SRF-sponsored project for $382.40. Item 2 is a pay request from WHKS for Waverly Water Pollution Control Facility, WPCF improvements, for $26,257.06. Item 3 is a pay request from Cardinal Construction for Cedar River Park Phase 3 Bid Package 1 dugouts and handrails for $1,805. Item 4 is a pay request from MSA Professional Services for Waverly Comprehensive Plan, Bike and Pedestrian Trail Plan, and Park and Open Space Plan Project for $40,000. Item 5 is a pay request to Ryder Construction Incorporated for WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for $443,258.60. Item 6 is a pay request from Farnsworth Group Incorporated for renovations at 117 First Street Northeast for $603.75. Item 7 is the cash disbursements for October of 2022. Item 8 is a Class C liquor license for Prairie Lynx Golf and Events Center LLC, and Item 9 is a Class C liquor license for Waverly Hospitality, Doing Business as Frederick Sip &amp; Eats. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. Council discussion, if any?
I just would like a clarification on item number 1 on the state revolving fund. Is that the Wetlands project up in northeast Waverly? Or I'm not exactly sure what that is.
I don't think that has started yet. They may be doing some-
$382.40 WHKS for Waverly State Revolving Fund sponsored project. I'm not sure what project that would be.
It is for the Wetlands.
And that would be the Wetlands if it's a state-sponsored project through SRF.
All right, that's what I thought.
Northwest, though.
It's in the northwest section.
North, oh yeah, I'm sorry, northwest.
Northwest.
Yes, sir.
My mistake.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Consent calendar is approved. Section I under Regular Business, item number 1 is Resolution 22-158, approving a possible extension to the Bremer County Fair Lease Agreement. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-158 approving a possible extension to the Bremer County Fair Lease Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Dranko, second by Belfour. Council discussion?
Why is it the possible? Either it is an extension or it isn't an extension. I mean-
Well, it depends on what you want to extend and how far. In the past, it's been one year, and a one-year extension would be until February, but there's a request to have the building still April, so it's not a crystal-clear one-year extension. Plus, I think you were determining before, you want a quarterly report, see what had been done, et cetera, so I thought you'd want discussion about where you want to go instead of just a blind, here's a year, let's go, so.
So I presume that through this discussion, more than likely, unless it falters, would be an amendment to the motion to put the stipulations of term and requirement. So that's the way that I read this.
Just a matter of when. Yes, sir.
It wasn't going to be proposed in the motion, so. Discussion to ensue.
Like I said, I'd like to hear from city staff about what our needs are going to be for Memorial Park and when the timeline of that will be, so then we can compare it to what the fair is requesting.
Um, that's a great question, so-
And I'm not looking for definitive plans because we don't know that, but just a timeline regarding the golf maintenance building, the pool-
How stuff will move forward, from what I'm looking at, is MSA is still working through the final preparations of our park plan, open space, et cetera, Memorial Park design. That should be done about the end of the year. We most likely, well, we are going to have to have a referendum on the pool, which is where the largest sum of funds will go. I mean, I think that's the biggest item of that plan. So that will have to occur sometime early as possible. I want to say it's March, it can go summer, a couple dates, et cetera. So depending on the referendum, that would determine if you move forward, how much it is, we have to work on planning, phasing. Even if we decided to start looking at July 1, the budget we're in, doing something, it wouldn't have occurred until July 1. And so with a matter of 60 days, the fair would be through, done, not a big deal for us to extend one more season of the fair. How far after that is probably the main question. We will be looking at, when we do the budget this year, bringing you the golf maintenance building, which has the paint and is best, is just everything that we need to probably have a different building done. It's not big enough to utilize the equipment, turn around, it's just, it's been needed for quite some time. We were looking at the hospital one time, acquiring it. I don't believe that's the case anymore. With their renovation, they won't need it. So our plan would be to demolish and build back on the same site, so that we're not infringing more ground in Memorial Park. So we would utilize that space as well. But in order to do that, we will need to put something somewhere, and that's probably looking to be, probably the end of '23, sometime in there. We would probably look at demolition through the winter, that kind of thing, depending on when timing works for parks and if you approve it during the budget. If that is the case, then we would probably want to possibly occupy the buildings that are on the fairgrounds to utilize them as well for that project. So you can certainly grant the request to go till April of '24. We may need those facilities ourselves before that, is I guess the best I can tell you from a staff standpoint. And a lot of that's a lot of ifs ands, approvals, it's kind of a chain of events that would get to that point, but the soonest we would need them would probably be the end of the year.
End of '23?
End of '23, correct, yes, ma'am. End of '23, not '22. And that's the best I can tell you as far as what staffing needs would be for those buildings, facility, the park itself. Because I don't see us getting into demolition necessarily or any of that prior to that. Because once the pool is approved, if it is, through the referendum, there's still a lot of work to figure out what else is going to need to be done, the cost estimates, everything. And then how are you going to phase it, pay for it, et cetera? And I don't know that we'll have that done, obviously, before July 1 of next year. So it'd be the fiscal, that'd be fiscal '24. Fiscal '25 budget, though, is when we will probably be getting a lot more serious about moving ground, demolition of buildings, the whole thing. And so we're trying to get things done ahead of that before that hits. Because once that starts, that's going to be the focus probably for some time in how we're going to fund everything. So it's a very long, I think it's going to be the end of '23.
How does this square with what you guys at the fairgrounds need?
You're more than welcome to come up, Roy, if you'd like.
Of course you will, it's my son's life.
Introduce yourself to the record, please.
Roy Peterson, Bremer County Fair. I'm also project manager for the past year. Don't know if I'm going to get demoted yet for the next coming year, but as of right now, I'm still on board, I guess.
Would it be a demotion, or would it be?
Well, I don't know. Can you get demoted from a free position? Or a not as long a position?
That's kind of what I'm asking. How does that work exactly?
You know? Anyway, I wanted to say, though, thanks for you guys' services, you know, commitment to the county and the county, though, too, because you guys put a lot of efforts in doing your job. So I totally realize that, and that's why I'm not sitting on your side right now, because I got enough on my plate. Anyway, I'm just going to give you just a quick synopsis of what just got done. A year ago, my son and I were here. Josh, he, by the way, is the president of the fairground, the fair board, and then, but we were here about a year ago, and, you know, we presented that we had expended about $650,000 at that time, and mainly that was to purchase the ground, and we had started the engineering of moving Phase 1, which is dirt. And here I am today, smiling, because we just completed 1.25 million out there in 12 months. So, and the momentum is still carrying. We finished a $1.1 million excavating dirt-moving project. We made that property walkable now for our fairgoers and our duty as serving 4-H and FFA students. So we laid that down, we made it presentable for people to walk on, and then we also are good to, being good conservationists, and there's ponds and, or, you know, detentions in place, so. And it's working, by the way. Some of those detention ponds held water, so things are working like they're supposed to be prior to Phase 1A, which is infrastructure coming onboard. But to add to that 1.1 million, we also completed about $150,000 of roads. So we put the base coat down, that's about 6,200 tons of rock down, and so now anybody can navigate through that right now, enjoy it, because we're going to close it off sooner than later, so that we don't have any trouble this winter. But I just wanted to give you an opportunity, please drive through it if it's available and kind of get a feel for how it lies, so. So we finished that, that's a good moment, and that was in 2022. Now for 2023, we're sitting with another 850,000 in the bucket to finish up some of our storm sewer, electric, gas communications, and that's going to start in spring. Bids are going to get released in January of 2023. So we're moving right into the infrastructure, and I'm happy to say, as of the last few hours, I just collected about another $175,000 in donations, just in the last couple days. So things are just moving right along like they should have, maybe before, but you know how it is. Until you start seeing something out there, now people are starting to get, really getting excited about it, we'll put it that way, so. With that infrastructure, we're going to start building buildings. We've got to put the buildings up. The buildings that are slated today to go on, and this could still move around, it's a moving target, we're going to see the, possibly the Swine Building go up. 150 of that 175,000 was towards the Swine Building. So it looks like we're going to get a Swine Building right away in the spring, we're going to start that. That's great, good place to be. We are looking at the one livestock building, which is a strong number, but we're working towards getting that. We're only about 10% into that building. Things are a little expensive nowadays than they were a few years ago, so. And then 4-H, FFA, and Richmond Center, we have another 15%, 20% already invested or onboard for that building, and that's also another strong building to build. And then also a stage. We want to build a stage on the northwest corner of that property. That's all for 2023. We could live without one or two of those buildings, and I haven't approached the county yet, because they also will be building a building on that property come this coming year. I'm going to try to get a partnership, just as a backup plan, that maybe if we didn't get the building we needed on there, we could use their building for that five-day session. We'd only use it for five days if we could. So I think we got a, we got a plan here to get us out there in 2024.
Where's that building going to go on the site, Roy?
So just north of Titans on 39th Street, past our driveway, there's 1.1, 1.2 acres that we are going to be deeding to the county for that building to go in.
That's for the, like, emergency response?
Management and health.
Emergency management and public health.
Public health, that's correct.
And the access for that, is that going to be on your driveway or on the street there?
So, and they haven't requested yet, but I believe their request is off 39th Street, of their own. They have to have their own, but they haven't requested. I don't even believe they're in front of engineering yet with Mike, so. We have still to confirm a couple things. You will notice that if you went over there, there's no culverts in place. We put some temporary drives in to get things mobilized back and forth into that, but we will eventually put in the proper driveways that need to be in. But we did a temporary fix, because we were on a fast track to get things done, so. And we don't want to do it twice, because we got to dig, we got to dig to get infrastructure in. So we're going to be cutting through at least one, if not two, of those drives, so. So that's kind of like, in a nutshell, everything's kind of moving right along, like we stood here a year ago and said it was going to happen, and then it's happening, so. Now, as a request, it looks like we need another year, for sure. And I, when I say for sure, it's because there's another, if you read into that, I asked for a one-year extension, that's for the fair. But then I got to looking at this, if you're not ready, and that's why there's some, you know, some fuzzy, or, you know, some wording in there, that I just wanted you to give us an opportunity, though, to revisit that, not to move the fair, or not to have another fair there. But we rent those buildings out, and we actually bring in some capital or some cash flow out of those buildings. That would allow us to use those buildings for cold storage for winter of 2023, and they clean out by April 1. But then I can take in several thousand dollars in for cold storage, if, if we're not ready for it from our, from the city's project sake. So if you're not ready, we could, and I don't know how you would even vault that in or out yet, but it's something that we can talk, you can discuss, is because it would kind of be nice if we had it till April 1, okay? Not for the fair in August, but for April 1 of 2024. And that would also allow us to keep booking, because people book our 4-H building, and that's just capital. It helps us out, keeps us strong, you know, that cash flow, that helps us out, so. I don't know if there's anything else I can add, unless somebody's got a question for me.
I've got a question for Garrett. So if we're looking at golf maintenance, that building, we wouldn't need both buildings, Drostie and 4-H, would we? Or would one suffice?
I think one would suffice.
So if we were able to clear Drostie, but leave 4-H, would that work?
That's the opposite. You can have the 4-H building, but not just have the Drostie.
Oh, you said 4-H, that's why I didn't know.
Yeah, so the 4-H building is really kind of quiet all winter long, so if we lost that, I'd be, we'd be okay with that. It's only going to maybe generate several hundreds, not thousands, okay? But the Drostie generates thousands of dollars, so. Right now, there's some pretty nice cars in there.
Some people rent that for storage, Roy.
What's that?
People rent Drostie for stuff.
So the Drostie, that's a controlled environment, climate-controlled, concrete, it's tight, so it's nothing but automobiles, and there's show, there's a lot of show cars in there, so it's a really nice place for us to generate funds.
So, Roy, a question about the 4-H building, though. Obviously been down there, but not real familiar with it. Does that have large doors and stuff on the side where we could get equipment in or not?
It's got one large door on the east side.
It does.
And then it has several walk-in doors. But yeah, you got one large door, it's a dracable. So you can bring your utility tractors, skid loaders, that type of equipment in there. You can bring a wagon, I mean, trailers in there, things of that sort. You definitely can get in there.
10 or 12-foot door, do you think?
It's a 10. It's a 10? 10-foot wide.
10-foot wide, okay.
Nothing to brag about, but it gets it in.
Right. Because that should be able to get everything in that we need to get in if that was the case. Okay, all right.
I'm glad you're entertaining the notion from taxpayer, too, by the way. I can shift to a different hat. And I'm glad that you're looking at these buildings and not considering using them, at least for a short period of time, as a taxpayer. Man, they're nice buildings. I wouldn't throw them away, yeah.
Right.
So I think 4-H would work.
Yeah. Well, if that's taller sheet, or that is, or nicer, it is. They're the same door. Little bit more height than the blue going up the 4-H, just slightly.
I do think that it would work, yeah. It's going to be a question of how, how much stuff we could actually get in to the 4-H building. Because, I mean, right now, our golf maintenance shed is completely stacked full with, you know, with mowers, with all of our other equipment.
So if it don't fold up to less than 10 feet, it won't go in there, but, you know, dump trucks will go in there, your small little single axles will go in, and things of that sort.
Right, we just need room to maneuver, too, once we're in there, because our building will be down.
So that 4-H building would maneuver better than the Drostie building, because it's wider.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's more of open space, square footage, yeah.
Right. That's the better bill.
I don't deny that, I'm just wondering if we need both. That's, that's what I'm thinking of, so that we can actually work in there, too, because that is going to be where we're working while that golf maintenance building is being built. You know, if that's the road that we go down come budget time. So I guess that's kind of my concern, is if we don't have those two, if we don't have the Drostie and the 4-H building, I'm not sure how we will operate throughout the winter doing, you know, I mean, we're doing maintenance all the time on those vehicles during the winter, whether that's grinding the reels, just general maintenance on the mowers. You know, I've already talked to Chris, we're not going to be getting a lift in to either of those buildings during that time, but he's going to have to go back to laying on the floor and doing stuff, which is fine. But I just don't want to fall into that, I don't want to fall into saying, yes, let's just use the 4-H building, then we don't have enough room to maneuver to actually work our way through the winter.
Would it be possible, would it be possible to do an extension for the fair lease to, like, December 1st of next year and then reassess? We'll know better what our situation is.
Till the end of the year, till January 1st, if you want to reassess it at that point, but-
I mean, then that leaves you in uncertainty.
November 1 is, November 1 would be my entrance. I enter my vehicles in there in November 1.
Oh, okay.
So if you're December-
The storage.
It's too late, yeah, for that to work. But we could look at it, revisit it in November.
We could revisit it November 1st, or October.
Or, excuse me, October 15th, or something like that.
And then we'd know more where we are and what's happening with-
From a budget standpoint, if we're going to go forward with the building or not, we'll have to get plans done, get it sped out. Because if nothing else, even if you did a full one-year extension, it takes you to February. Maybe it's a compromise, you go to February, not April.
And I can do a push come to shove, I can do an early release-
Right.
-if I have to. And most people don't like to get their stuff out in the snowstorm, but it is, it is what it is.
But I mean, end of February would be a full one year, because I think right now it goes to the end of February.
Correct.
Yeah, so that'd be a true year. And then at least we, you know, we could maybe hold off demolition until March.
You're going to know more in eight months from now, anyway.
Sure.
Six, eight months.
Absolutely.
And we could revisit that part of it, if you, if you, you know, could we revisit that? Let's evaluate the extension of the fair and then reevaluate the opportunity to use the building yet a little bit longer.
Because, I mean, how safe is it for people to be using that maintenance building? What's falling off it at this point? I mean, you know, that has to be taken into account.
Right. It just doesn't look real good inside. I don't know how else to explain it.
That's an understatement.
Anyone's welcome to come and tour it with it.
No, I've been in there before, but, yeah.
Like, and I don't know if it's necessarily a case of, you know, safety-
Okay.
-but it just does not look good, and it, it's time for that building to-
Retire.
-go.
I'm pretty confident in saying that if Chris had his choice of rolling around on that floor or the 4-H building floor, I know which one he'd choose.
Me, too.
Right.
I guess I, I would be comfortable certainly extending the fair through September, October, and then reevaluating on October 1st for the, for the other buildings. Sure. Does that work for you, Roy? If it was, we revisit October 1?
October 1, yeah.
That way you know for November what's coming, we'll know a lot more about where we're at, bids, estimates, everything.
Plus, we can, well, we won't rent the 4-H building after that, anyway, that way. He'll know, because he rented, he basically takes care of that.
We can go through 4-H building, hopefully get in there and really check that size and see what we're dealing with.
Right, because I could be mistaken, and maybe the 4-H building will be plenty big-
Maybe it's enough, and we won't have an issue.
For us to, you know, for us to use.
We'll see if you get in there.
You can get in anytime you want, we can just be your code. I can give you the code, so.
We'll get with, we'll get with Josh and-
It would be bad to measure it out, compared to what we currently have, and maybe it'll work.
Yep.
You know, temporarily, obviously, but at least it'll work, and then it solves our issue. So I'll leave that to the council, as how you want to proceed, but we would go with October 1 if that works for all of us concerned, staff and Roy.
It's nice to see progress out there, and I appreciate the good communication from you and your willingness to figure out a compromise, because we, of course, want the fair to be successful, we just want to make sure that we can move forward.
It's good for everybody.
It is, yeah. Both projects are good for everybody, so.
Something, it's a commitment that we have to make to our kids, so it's got to be there. And I wouldn't be doing my job right if I didn't ask for money from every one of you, by the way, for the new fairgrounds. No, really. There's never, put it this way, there's never enough time. The money does come in, but, you know, it's, we're trying to get this stuff coming in, and we're doing the grant things, that, things have been going really well, but just never fast enough, you know how that is. When you start talking three-quarters of a million-dollar buildings, don't take ones, chop away on that, so.
You're preaching to the choir. Wish it was three-quarter million.
They don't call him Persistent Peterson for nothing. Just say a consideration, you could think of this. Do we, if somebody makes a motion through the end of October, knowing that their storage lease is November first, but then they are invited back at the first meeting of October?
Yeah, you can do that, extend it to the end of October, but we need to revisit it early October.
On the first of October.
To see where everything's at.
That way, we haven't ended a lease and are reconsidering writing a new one, essentially.
It's fine with me.
Just a thought, it's for the council, they didn't run up the flagpole, but, um, that way, we aren't doing the after-the-fact thing.
Yeah, well, it's fine with me.
I would be, yeah, that's fine.
So somebody make a motion to amend the original motion.
I'll move to amend Resolution 22-158, removing, um, the word "possible" and instead stating that we are going to approve an extension to the Breamer County Fair Lease Agreement to October 31st to be revisited at the first council meeting of October.
Which year?
Twenty twenty-three.
Figure that should be part of the motion?
Yeah. Good point. I'll second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Bowfer. I'll reread the motion, just to verify. Uh, amended as approved Resolution 22-158 approving an extension to the Breamer County Fair Lease Agreement to terminate on 10/31/2023 with them coming back the first meeting of October for the extension beyond that. Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries on the amendment to the motion, so now that one rides. Any further discussion by council? Everything clear for you, Carla? Okay. Roll call, then, Carla.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
I'll abstain.
Drake, Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of five to zero, one absent and one abstaining, I have an approval on the Resolution 22-158. As amended. Item two is the third and final reading of Ordinance 1112, amending the zoning ordinance of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of a city of Waverly property from R2 residential district to C2 commercial district. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve third and final reading of Ordinance 1112, amending the zoning ordinance of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning of a city of Waverly property from R2 residential district to C2 commercial district.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, the third and final reading of Ordinance 1112 is approved. Brings us to item three, Resolution 22-154, accepting certification detailing the amount of new loans, advances and indebtedness which qualify for payment from tax increment revenues of the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-154, accepting certification filed by the finance manager to the Braebert County Auditor detailing the amount of new loans, advances and indebtedness which qualify for payment from tax increment revenues of the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Raffi, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-154 is approved. Brings us to 3A, the approval of the fiscal year 2022 state urban renewal report.
I will move approval of fiscal year 2022 state urban renewal report.
Second.
Motion by Angus, second by Bergen, council discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign, motion carries.
Isn't that a roll call vote?
I have voice vote. Voice vote.
Oh, and here it says roll call vote.
Oh, I have voice vote. It's okay. Item number four is Resolution 22-155, approving the fiscal year 2022 street finance report.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-155, approving the fiscal year 2022 street finance report.
Second.
Motion by Drakehouse, second by Bergen, council discussion, if any. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-155 is approved. Item five is the first reading of Ordinance 1113, adopting the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa and setting a public hearing.
I will move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1113, adopting the city code of the city of Waverly, Iowa and setting December 5th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time and place for a public hearing. Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Angus, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Six to zero and one absent, gets us approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1113. Item six is Resolution 22-159, accepting the Coleman Park parking lot project as complete and approving final payment. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-159, accepting the Coleman Park parking lot project as complete and approving invoice number 1742 in the amount of $16,655.20 as final payment to James Concrete of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Bergen, council discussion.
I have one small question. So in addition to this parking lot, also the parking lot at the bike trail was completed. That was done just using asphalt to the concrete. So why does this need a special approval and that one doesn't?
So after it was approved at council on October 3rd, I added about another five-and-a-half by 23-foot area at Kids Kingdom, I'm sorry, at Coleman Park. And so I just wanted to bring that back in front of you because of it, I didn't grab my papers or whatever it added to. That was not the price that you guys had approved.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-159 is approved. Item seven is Resolution 22-160, approving the new zoning map update for the city of Waverly, Iowa. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-160, approving the new zoning map update for the city of Waverly, Iowa.
Second.
Motion by Drakehouse, second by Schneider, council discussion, if any.
So there's just the one on here that we just approved, right? Everything that we've done other than.
So most of this, I think, was the, um, the dry run, or that stuff was all made with the U1s and stuff. And then we just have the one that we just approved at the end.
Yeah, okay.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-160 is approved. Item number eight is Resolution 22-161, approving the plan, development site plan amendment for the Whitetail Bluff subdivision. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 22-161, approving the plan, development, site plan amendment for the Whitetail Bluff subdivision in the city of Waverly, Iowa for JDM Property Holdings LLC.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Bowfer, council discussion.
The first paragraph on the background information, I thought, was really confusing. So if someone could explain, I understand this has to do with setbacks, but, um, the R2 and R1, I thought the wording was really confusing in there, so you could explain the difference in setbacks between R1 and R2?
Sure, so the, um, this is a planned development, so we could, so the developer could actually propose and set its own setbacks and those kinds of things in different lots. And what we found when we were trying to work with the builder on a couple of buildings that they were proposing on that, those center lots, was that there were some inconsistencies that got, that got into the plan, in that it was on the plat differently than it was supposed to be and that the deed of dedication actually included a, 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 a proposal that would, would limit or would actually make the smallest unit be 2,500 square feet in the entire subdivision. And that wasn't the intent, because we were intending to have an R1 district around the outside, the riverside, and then have the centers, the center of lots that are narrower and not as deep, to make them smaller. And I think he used the standard R1 language in his deed of dedication, which we didn't see until it was put together with the, um, the final plat when they recorded the documents. So that, that, we didn't, we didn't see it happen. And when we were looking at a house that was being proposed for one of the lots in the middle, it wouldn't fit. It wasn't, it was too big, it was too small. And it was actually fairly decent sized.
The lot was too small for the house?
Yeah, well, the lot was fine, but the house was too small. It wouldn't meet 2,500.
Oh, I see, okay.
So they, we threw out there the, the 1250, and I know there were some people that thought that was too small. And we suggested that they could have put any number in between, in our mind. And I think that the owner, developer that owns all those lots in the middle, Stagie, thought it would just be easier just to keep it at 20, at 1250, because 1250 on those lots means that they're almost all wipe, uh, walkout. And they would probably be 2,500 total between the first floor and the basement. And the basement doesn't count on the floors. So that's kind of the discrepancy there. It's still, the back half of the house is basically gonna be out of the ground. So it's almost like a two-story, um, when you do that. So he felt that that was just, it was easier to leave it more flexible. That he kept the front, he wanted the 25-foot setback in the front, so that you didn't have short yards. The sides are not 10, they're, they're seven, seven-and-a-half feet, so there's 15 feet between homes. And then the back was supposed to be 30, they had 30 feet there, but it was supposed to be 20, because there's a 40-foot, 40-foot easement for two, for four lots, and then the rest of them are 15-foot for drainage easements, which cannot be built in, nothing can be built in those, including the patios, because the patios would then flatten out the, the surface and you need the swale to occur to keep the water drained. So, um, we were just trying to help the developers, the two developers that own the lots that haven't been built on yet, let them make the decision about the numbers that they wanted. And it is consistent with what the discussion was.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-161 is approved. Item number nine is the first reading of Ordinance 1114 for engaging in food and beverage services and cart storage at the Waverly Golf Course. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1114 for engaging in food and beverage services and cart storage in connection with operation of the Waverly Golf Course in accordance with Iowa Code Chapter 23A.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Bowfer, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1114 is approved. Item number 10, first reading of Ordinance 1115, repealing and replacing Section 105.5.10 thereof entitled golf carts and enacting and adopting a new Section 105.5.10 golf carts. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1115 as read by Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Drakehouse, second by Bergen, council discussion.
I'd say thank you for putting this together for us.
Well, again, point out that this is only as good as the knowledge that our citizens have of what the regulations actually are, so we can pass all the regulations we want, excuse me, but, or ordinances that we want, but if people don't know what they are, they're not going to follow them, so. Now, we need to make sure we have some way of being able to publicize all of these things in the spring when weather is more conducive to people driving around on their golf carts.
We'll make sure the ordinance is available for those who are golfing at the courses, so.
That'd be a good idea, too.
Not a bad thing when you lease a cart shed. I mean, I know most of those are going from the shed to the golf course, but, you know, it could be part of our lease agreement that you've received a copy of the current ordinance. This is a nice addendum to that, so, anyway. Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, the first reading of Ordinance 1115 is approved. Item number 11 is Resolution 22-162, approving the addition of the city on-call policy to the employee handbook effective November 23rd, 2022.
I'll move approval of Resolution 22-162, approving the addition of the city on-call policy to the employee handbook effective November 23rd, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Raffi, second by Schneider, council discussion.
Have we not had a written on-call policy prior to this?
There was one in the contract years ago that was permissive, and we removed it. And at that time, we were trying to do call-in basis to get people to come when they had emergencies, whether it's water main breaks, et cetera, and people simply don't answer their phone. And so we're now having to put a policy in place to try to reinforce that they need to be doing that as part of the policy itself. This weekend, it came up again, and nobody wants to answer their phone. So therefore, we have to have coverage of some sort, and this will complete that process.
And I would assume that this doesn't affect all city employees, there are only certain city employees that will be subject to being on-call.
You're correct. You are correct, it's mostly Public Works Department and Parks Division.
So they're just.
Parks Division is more snow-related versus true on-call. That's more of a standby, we've kind of tried to differentiate, so this is more of a on-call, water main breaks, sewer issues, things like that, that are emergency-based, that we have to have staff coverage. Otherwise, Justin is constantly going out himself. We have individuals that are, you know, a drill, I mean, we just don't have coverage unless we have something stating you will be there.
So will there be a call schedule, like a calendar?
There will be a schedule, yeah. This will be completed, and then we will have coverage.
All right.
And does everybody live within 30 minutes?
I believe so. I believe that's one of the requirements we had, so yeah, I think everybody is within that radius.
Okay. Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Angus.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Bowfer.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drakehouse.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent, Resolution 22-162 is approved. Brings us to Section J, reports from boards and commissions. Item one and two is Human Equity and Diversity Commission minutes of August 2nd and October 11th, 2022. Item three is the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of October 6th, 2022. Item four is the Golf Commission minutes of October 11th, 2022. Item five is Leisure Services Commission minutes of October 20th, 2022. Item six and seven are the Breamer-Waverly Law Enforcement Board minutes of October 10th, 2022, and November 14th, 2022. Item eight is the Waverly Airport Commission minutes of October 13th, 2022. Item nine is the monthly financial report of October 2022. And item 10 is the City of Waverly State Annual Financial Report of fiscal year 2022, received into the record. Brings us to Section K, staff updates, Mr. Browner.
I don't think we have anything tonight, sir.
All right, keep us moving, city council comments, Mr. Bergen.
Well, congratulations to the Warburg cross-country team for their, the men's second place and women's third place in the, um, in the Division III championship. The Warburg football team continues to play. They beat their first-round opponent on Saturday, and they play this Saturday at St. John's, so good luck to them. If they keep winning, eventually, maybe they'll be able to come to city council, shake our hands.
There you go.
And I encourage anyone who'd like to talk about city business after city council meeting, I will be willing to share a beer at the poorhouse.
They can have their own, though, right?
They have to drink their own, yeah. I'm not buying a beer, I will drink a beer with them.
That's what you said.
I have a straw.
Two. Ms. Bowfer.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
After that, I can believe it.
Uh, just encourage everybody to shop local on Saturday.
Absolutely.
As per the proclamation.
And every day.
Yeah.
Mr. Schneider. Mr. Drakehouse.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Krenikos. All right. Mr. Angus.
Just, uh, once again, I'm thankful for being able to serve in the city and the engagement that our citizens have, having gone through another election cycle and seeing a fairly nice turnout from our city in terms of election, even though it wasn't city elections, but just the state and federal elections. It's always nice to see that we live in a very engaged community.
Absolutely. Um, the only comment that I have is regarding snow is impending here in our near future. Um, plan now to adopt a hydrant in your area to keep it clear of